Good morning, everybody. This is a meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and just about half of our staff. And this was our first effort to do more public presentations about the policies that Boulder County has adopted that inform the decisions that we make on spending, on positions that we take at Dr. Cog with our Mayors and Commissioners Coalition, the spending decisions that we're making with our new extended transportation tax. And so Commissioner Stolzmann, who's joining us on the screen, and Commissioner Loachman and myself decided that it would really be helpful for the public to just get, be better informed about what we're hearing as county commissioners from our expert staff so that we're all on the same page as we move forward on transportation funding and various projects. And we're kicking it off this morning with a discussion of our Vision Zero policies and and the improvements and the programs and services that we are putting in place so that we can reduce the incidence of tragic fatalities and serious accidents on our roads. It's, I think, if you follow the news at all, you're aware that that vehicle crashes, bicycle accidents, pedestrian injuries, they're all up tragically. And, and so the urgency of this Vision Zero policy is very important. And, and so what we're going to do is have a presentation from our staff on what they're working on with Vision Zero, and each person is going to introduce themselves as they speak rather than to climb this morning for that. And, and then while the commissioners may have some dialogue with, with staff about what we've heard, and, and then we'll close this out and it'll be recorded and available for the public to watch if they're interested in going back and learning more. And I think, I hope I can say safely that the materials that we'll be looking at here this morning are on our website, and if that wasn't the plan, we'll figure out how to make it the plan. So this is a new thing, and I'm really excited about it, and I'm going to stop talking and turn it over to Kathleen.
Thanks. Thank you so much, Commissioner Levy. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and to be part of this first meeting with this public facing update for the community. I'm Kathleen Brackey. I'm the Deputy Director for Boulder County's Community Planning and Permitting Department and lead our Transportation Planning Team. But I'm here today as part of a much broader team across Boulder County organization, all of the work that we're doing around transportation safety. And in order to achieve our ambitious Vision Zero safety goal to reduce and ultimately eliminate all serious injury and fatal crashes, takes all of us working together. So it's all of the folks you'll hear from today, there's meetings more that are working on this that are online and behind the scenes as well. So it truly is a team effort across the organization and also with our agency partners at all levels around local, regional, state, and federal partners to bring this forward. So it's exciting work, it's critical work, and it's foundational work. Everything we do is really centered on safety and making sure that people choosing any mode of transportation, driveway blocking, biking, access and transport, whatever it may be, they get where they want to go safely and they get home safely. So that is the foundation of our work and our policy. And we've got a great presentation for you this morning. Again, we'll highlight the work that's going on across the organization. And it is, I guess, as I put a speed pill to climb. This is a lot of work, our local and state and national data, you'll hear, is trending in the wrong direction, and so we really need to double down on our efforts on making sure that we can create a more safe system for people of all ages and abilities, all modes of transportation, and all stages of life. We do have this brief presentation, it will, we will make sure that it's available on our website so that people can see it afterwards, and certainly want to continue the ongoing dialogue with all of us together as well as with the community. Because while it also takes our organization, it takes each and all of us individually as well to get there. So we all use our transportation system in different ways, so how can we all work together individually and together to improve our safety? So I, we have a great lineup this morning, so I'm going to start off and hand it off to Alex Pygrett, who's with our Transportation Planning Team to be our first presenter.
Good morning, officials. So to discuss how we got to your current Vision Zero policy, take a couple steps back to our 2020 Transportation Master Plan update. So this policy is really informed by what we've heard from the public. As part of the outreach for that plan, this graph shows the number of comments that made in different categories. Facilities was frequently commented on topic, calling for safety, signalizing intersections, pedestrian facilities. So as part of our GMP, it's exalted also for safety is one, and then all to performance metric for safety. So for a little bit of background on what is Vision Zero, it's a shift in philosophy that states that no loss of life is acceptable. Sorry. So Vision Zero takes that traffic deaths are punishable, we should anticipate human failing in our approach to traffic safety and focus on fatal and severe crashes with a safe systems approach. So with that foundation from our public input and from the Vision Zero Network, Vision Zero goal that was adopted by the Commissioners back in 2020 was to eliminate serious entry and fatal crashes incorporated for 2035. A couple examples of power integrating equity into this work include our Vision Zero Safe Routes to School Action Plan that we've applied to grant funding for, which will establish equity-based prioritized list for traffic safety improvements at schools, and then our Safer Streets and Roads program that was recently funded by the USDOT to complete our Vision Zero action plan. Both of those will include an equity assessment and a focus on fall over. In terms of how we're going to pay for that and how we're prioritizing our lessons, this really goes back to our 2022 Transportation Sales Tax that was recently expanded by the voters. So while none of this is legible, the arrows show all different projects that cross directly on traffic safety. So we want to show how integrated Vision Zero is, how we prioritize investments from this sales tax. And with that, I'm going to hand it off to Paul Frank in our Community Planning and Permitting Department. All right.
And Paul, just before you start talking, this is Ashley. We have a number of chats that folks are having a hard time hearing, so if folks in the room could speak up, that would be great.
All right. So I'm going to talk a little bit about evaluation. So we get all of our crash data from CDOT, both for CDOT highways and county local highways. And then Public Works and CPMP clean up the data prior to, you know, we'll use it for analysis. And then what we do is kind of a comprehensive crash analysis using that data. We do that every three years using the previous 10 years' worth of data. The chart on the screen shows traffic crash fatalities in Boulder County between 2006 and 2022. As you can see, we had a dip in 2020 related to the pandemic, and then the last two years have really jumped up. And this is, kind of matches both statewide and national trends. They've seen a rise in fatalities, and this is both unincorporated and municipalities, so it's the entire county. So this is an example map from our traffic crash analysis, just kind of a heat map showing all of our injury and fatal crashes in unincorporated Boulder County and our mountain towns. And so, you know, we kind of use a data-driven approach that informs and confirms our work. Another part that we have is our crash analysis team, and this is a group that gets together every other month and reviews fatal and serious injury crashes that have occurred in unincorporated Boulder County. And it's made up of folks from CPMP, Public Works, Sheriff's Office, the DA's office, as well as Colorado State Patrol and CDOT. And we get together and see if there's anything that, you know, identify litigation or possible quick fixes that we can do in the event of a fatal crash from happening in that location. So just a quick comparison where Boulder County is, this is a chart showing 2020 to 2022 fatal crashes for 100,000 population. And as you can see, Boulder County is slightly better than average, but we definitely still have a lot of work to do as we work towards zero deaths. So our traffic crash analysis identified four major crash trends. The first one is centerline crossing crashes, and particularly on US 287. Another one is bicycle crashes, especially like hit from behind and getting hit by a turning motor vehicle at an intersection. The third is broadside approach turn crashes at intersections, and the fourth is single-vehicle crashes, especially apparent related and involving a motorcycle. So what's, are some things we are doing to try to address these major areas? Well, for settling crossing crashes on US 287, we have a safety study that we started that's kind of looking at the whole corridor, both unincorporated areas and municipalities, to see what, what improvements created for safety. Also, just last week, we submitted an H-SIP grant application with CDOT to construct a concrete barrier in the median to try to prevent some of these fatal head-on crashes that are occurring. And so with that, I'm going to hand it off to Christine from Public Works.
Good morning. Yes, I'm Christine Overdorff, Engineering Division Manager for Public Works. Going to highlight some projects and the facility type of improvements we've made and are planning to make to the implementation of these projects. So by looking at bicyclists hit from behind, there's two approaches that we've looked at. The first one is looking at the space within the roadway itself. Most recently, we completed half of 71st Street, and we're going to construct another half this me, or this week, this year. 120th Street, south of Lafayette, is forthcoming, and Lafayette is working on South Boulder Road. With these facilities, we're looking at, looking at adding paved shoulders, buffer shoulders, and bike lanes. In addition, the Transportation Planning Group has worked a lot with CDOT historically and in the future, one being the US 36 bike, which is a separate facility, as well as the 119 bike way from Boulder up to Longmont, and then looking at a separated facility along the foothills highway. And then, you know, this unfortunately is a common occurrence where we have bicyclists hit by turning vehicles, and some of the things that we do at these intersections are adding strip striping or green pavement markings, and that could either be at intersections or even in the case of like J-Roe, we're adding striping adjacent to the road itself. And the intersection where we've added buffered bike lanes and striping is US 287 and Isabel. And forthcoming, we're starting the design of 61st and Belmont Road. And again, looking at separate facilities of the foothills bike way from Boulder to Lyons. Many of us, you know, have unfortunately seen several accidents that occur at intersections, but what we might not know is the terminology that like Josh Tricky or Traffic Engineer or Josh or Paul look for when they're looking in the crash reports from the State Patrol. Now would be your approach turn, which is your left-turning vehicle, and then your T-bone or your broadside crash. So some of the things that we have done to help with those, and this one I'm particularly proud of is the 287 and Isabel Rowa project. CDOT did a study in 2016 looking at 508 intersections within their region. This intersection was the fourth highest need to improve, including by adding left-turn lanes, buffered bike shoulder, bike lanes, buffered bike shoulders, and looking at all the traffic movements there to help reduce those crashes. Later this year, we hope to construct 95th Street and look out Rowan Intersection, and that is granted funded with, it's a project, please don't ask me to tell you what that actually means. And then, very highly safety improvement, thank Kathleen. And then, again, looking at intersections and bike way, bike way facilities along 119. So that, I'll hand it back over to Paul to continue forward.
Sure. So one other thing to do as far as single-vehicle crashes is we are adding six-inch edge line stretching on our county roads to help better delineate where the edge of the road is. That's something that CDOT has also been working on, switching over on their highways as well. I'm also tied briefly about education. Education is an important component of the Vision Zero. One of the things that we do is our Vision Zero Community Partnership meetings. These are held approximately once a quarter, and we bring together county staff, staff from all the municipalities within the county, CDOT, transportation advocates, folks from school districts, and we all get together and share ideas and collaborate on things that we can do to work towards our shared goal of Vision Zero, reducing fatal and severe injury crashes. Another important part is our Youth Transportation Program that Kenny Exum runs. And so on the program she has is TripTractor, the Bicycle Friendly Driver Training, and then a Safe Routes to School Lending Network that we just started up as well, among many other things that her program does. With that, I'm going to hand it off to Jim Chamberlain, Division Chief with Boulder County Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, Jim Chamberlain, Sheriff's Office. For enforcement, we have two forms of enforcement for responding to accidents. Primary response for investigating accidents on the county is the Colorado State Patrol. They're responsible for the investigation of all accidents on the county roads. The Sheriff's Office is responsible for investigating accidents that occurred on contract counts. Even though Colorado State Patrol is responsible for responding to accidents, the Sheriff's Office is responsible for, we have more individuals available to respond to them, and we assist the State Patrol providing assistance in their investigation of those traffic control or destabilizing incidents. As our department starts to stabilize and stopping, we're starting to put more emphasis on traffic enforcement for deputies in the county, with a priority on some of the major roles of 36, 119, 287, for the more fatal and more serious accidents. We've also partnered with the state, we just received information we've obtained a grant for clicker or ticket, which is going to put more deputies on the street looking for traffic violations with an emphasis on seatbelt safety and making sure people watch their seatbelts. Also applying for a lead grant, a law enforcement assistance fund, the system identifying officers that could be out there at night looking for a predator. So we are stepping up. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mark Rosen.
I'll take over. Thanks, chief. Good morning, everybody. I'm Christian Gardner Wood. I'm one of the chief deputy DAs at the DA's office under Michael Doherty in our Community Protection Division. Wanted to spend just a little bit of time talking about our traffic safety program within the DA's office and some of the things that we're working on. But before I talk about that program, I wanted to piggyback on some of the stats that Paul talked about earlier in terms of our prosecutions. So on the next slide, you'll see some of our prosecutions over the last three years. If you look at, on the left side, the data there are careless resulting in death and our vehicular homicides and vehicular assaults are very serious traffic crashes. And we saw a substantial spike in all three of those between 2021 and 2022. When you look at our vehicular assaults, careless with death and vehicular homicide, that's been a concerning trend, just as the CDOT numbers were showing that we have seen in our prosecutions, but really just a massive spike last year that really caught our attention. If you look at the right side on that data, we're looking at our careless driving resulting in injury, that's bodily injury as opposed to the serious bodily injury that we're looking on the left side, certainly not to diminish it, but just to explain the differences between those two. And then we have our careless driving stats. Out of those five different stats, careless driving does not necessarily mean that there is a crash. I do want to preface it with that. The other four, there will be a crash associated with those prosecutions that we're dealing with that either result in death or in injury. The careless driving, those numbers will include both crash matters as well as non-crash careless drivings. But we've seen that trend, just as the state numbers have, of the increase over the last several years, but a market increase just last year when we look at our more serious cases with death or vehicular assault. So thinking about that, if we go to the next slide, we've looked over the last year at increasing our traffic safety program, recognizing that when we think about the numbers on the prior slide, it's too late when we're dealing with that. Those are serious prosecutions that need to be treated very seriously, and that's how we do it as the DA's office. But recognizing that when we're talking about speeding, when we're talking about distracted driving, and those cases that we're getting from the sheriff's office and from the State Patrol, we need to deal with those from an education standpoint, so we're not getting to those fatal crashes and we're not getting to the injury crashes. So we have worked to look at how we can do more education with folks that are coming into our office. We had staff members that audited all of the classes that we send folks to, and looking at making sure that those were appropriate, working with community partners to make sure that they feel that those are providing the necessary information. And we've added some classes, we took away some that we did not feel were as appropriate to refer folks to. And we also looked at recognizing concerns around equity around that in terms of the cost for those classes. We're working and getting funding to be able to provide money to drivers that say they may not be able to afford those classes, to make sure that they're getting that education that they need in order to understand the concerns around speeding or distracted driving that is ultimately leading to those increase in numbers that we saw in the data slides. We've also been working with our Diversion and Restorative Justice Unit to also engage those individuals from an educational restorative practice standpoint, so that they understand with the increase we've seen statewide and particularly in Boulder around those serious crashes of what the next step is with those speeding or distracted driving cases, so they can understand the harm and the impact that they may just see it as, oh, I was going 15 miles over, it's not a big deal. But when we have those conversations, they understand the concerns and the impact that this is having in our community as we're recognizing those conversations we're having with our community partners, Bicycle Colorado, some of the local advocacy group, advocacy groups, Mother Skins Drug Driving, that are explaining those harms and the community safety risks. So really a focus on those lower-level violations to hopefully provide that education and restorative conversation so we're not getting to those continued substantial numbers on the fatalities and serious traffic collisions. And I'm going to hand it over to Mark Rusing with the Commissioner's Office.
Good morning, commissioners. Mark Rosen, Senior Policy Analyst here in the Commissioner's Office. On the screen, you will see the traffic safety policy that the Commissioners included in Boulder County's 2023 State Legislative Agenda. A primary legislative effort that we see that's currently in place to make progress on this policy goal is listed there at the bottom of the slide, the Automated Vehicle Identification Systems Bill. Boulder County is coordinating with the Northwest Mayors and Commissioners Coalition to track and engage with this pending bill that's coming from primarily Bicycle Colorado. We've been working to inform the effort to draft the bill, and our current understanding of the legislative legislation is that it is intended to make it easier for local jurisdictions to implement photo radar speed enforcement. Because speeding is often a contributing factor in severe crashes, having more tools in the toolbox like photo radar speed enforcement to address speeding is important. As I mentioned, staff is coordinating and engaging with the NWMCC, the City of Boulder, and other key stakeholders to provide input on the draft bill, which we are expecting to be sponsored by Senator Faith Winter from Westminster. If introduced, as I mentioned, we see the bill as a primary way to support the State Legislative Agenda policy you see on the screen, and we plan to engage, actively engage in the advocacy effort to support the bill. We'll be sure to keep you apprised of the effort. The bill has not yet been introduced, but once it is, we'll be in touch with the Commissioners around engaging with the advocacy effort and as well as with Kathleen and her team. That's all I have, and I believe Kathleen is going to take it from here.
Great, well, thank you so much, and hopefully this gives a flavor of all of the work that is being done across the organization to support our Vision Zero, our Transportation Safety Initiative, both to look at this from a data-driven approach as well as to look at this from a preventative approach, and how do we use that information and all of these opportunities through the engineering and the education and the enforcement together so that we can create a safer transportation system for people traveling throughout Boulder County and connecting on beyond. It really is that holistic approach of how do we pull it all together? And we work not only within our county organizations, but as I mentioned, with our agency partners. So the Denver Regional Council of Government has a very robust program on Vision Zero and traffic safety. We've provided some information on the website here and some links for a great video that was done by Dr. Cog, really that emphasizes why the number is zero. We talk about this a lot and what an ambitious goal it is, and isn't it realistic? And we've been working on traffic safety for decades, and we can't get there. But why is, why now and why is zero the right number and why is it the only number that we really can focus on? Because when we look at the, yes, we talk about the data, but all of these numbers are people, and there are people who were hurt or people who didn't get home that night. And so we want to make sure that we're working in concert and hand-in-hand with our countywide colleagues and then also with Dr. Cog, also Colorado Department of Transportation. We lean on them a lot. They have great information and educational videos to share, so we can provide links and resources for that as well. Again, none of us can do this together. It takes all of us working hand-in-hand to make this transformational change happen and to actually achieve Vision Zero. So it's important work, as I said, it's critical work. And again, at the end of the day, it takes all of us as individuals as well. So on the Dr. Cog website, there's also a link to take a personal pledge. And as you're out on the transportation system, to really be thinking about, am I paying attention? Am I speeding? Am I on my phone? Am I trying to multiply past here? And really to make that pledge to be a safe contributor to the safety of the system. So again, just some examples of resources that are very important and out there for all of us to use and to work together on. This slide provides information on Boulder County's Vision Zero website. Again, I will post this presentation from today, a link to the presentation and the dialogue we have coming up so that people can see it. And we really appreciate the public interest, the public support for all these safety initiatives. They're not easy, and as we go forward and as we're working on these projects together that Christine mentioned and others, there's going to be critical trade-offs and hard conversations. We're used to the transportation system and transportation planning prioritizing convenience or speeding or things like that, being able to get somewhere quickly. Well, now we need to think about, it's not just that, it's really thinking about how do we get there safely? And we may have to make different decisions and trade-offs in terms of what we're prioritizing and how we're prioritizing our investment. So we appreciate the support and the engagement as we go forward with all of this important work. So that, I think, our next slide is sort of questions that we thought could help tee off the discussion this morning with all of you. Again, just to help get us started, but thinking around, you know, our current Transportation Plan, Vision Zero safety. transportation plan, Vision Zero safety goal and performance metric. Just giving your feedback on that. And then any additional information that you would like to see and any suggestions that you would have for us as we work together. So thank you.
That's great. Thanks. Thanks, everyone, for coming, joining us, providing us this background and information for a discussion that I think the Commissioners ought to have now on what we've heard. And we can start, we can use those questions for prompts or I know I wrote down a couple of questions I would like to ask. So I think we can use that. We can just put the questions we have on the table. It can be discussion. And I'm going to yield the floor here. Martha, and let's just do, let's not go with titles because we're just having a meeting here. So Martha, anything top of mind for you?
Sure. Thanks. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. Appreciate the information. And this is, for me, this is really important. This is something we've been talking about as a work for the last couple of years and our newest Commissioner was was ready to join us as well in that we have a lot of these types of presentations that come to us. And so what piece of this work can we just share with the public? Because it really is informational. It's exciting work and there's some opportunities. So I do have a couple of questions actually for all of you who presented while you were speaking. And some of that is because I think there's some other opportunities for involvement that it wasn't clear to me. And so I just want to make sure that folks who are listening in or watching the video later have that same information. There might be some other additional links that we can provide. So one, and I believe it was Alex in your conversation, I just wondered if you were talking about equity work and vulnerable road users is the term I heard. And I'm just wondering if you could, what does that mean? What, who is, who are you considering in this work as a vulnerable road user?
Generally, vulnerable road users is a term that applies to bicyclists, pedestrians, and motorcyclists, people that aren't close to a car.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Some, and it might have been the same one, showed a little bit about a heat map. Is that heat map just something you put in the presentation? Is it actually a heat map where it's on the website that people could look at and see some of that same data that was showing injuries and fatal crashes?
Yeah. So that's from our most recent traffic crash analysis, which is on our Vision Zero website. This link to the slide before this. So.
Okay.
Yes, that map and a bunch of other maps showing different crash patterns.
Okay, great.
The particular heat map that was shown shows all injury and fatal crashes.
Okay, thank you. And my hope, I think, for that is there's some in that education realm, both for educators and also students who are doing research, et cetera. If we have some of this information that people can access, I think that would be really great to make it localized.
Can I jump on that?
Of course.
Just real quickly on the heat map, I think, Alex, is that the map where you actually click on the side of the crash and then tell you a little bit about it, like what was involved?
Not that. Not that was the static one, but we do have an interactive map on the County Vision Zero website.
Okay. Let's see here. I think this was part of Christine's presentation that was talking about the two eighty-seven and Isabel and the research that CDOT had done with five hundred plus areas and that Isabel was actually number four on the list. Could you share where on the list, the ninety-fifth and Lookout, and also, I think ninety-fifth and Lookout was the only one because Highway one nineteen.
Right. So it only looked at their intersections. So ninety-fifth and Lookout is only, it's an unincorporated Boulder County intersection only. So they did not study intersections that were not their own. So that would not have been in the study.
Okay. So the prioritization wasn't around the high level of crashes necessarily. It was some other prioritization.
No, it wasn't around crashes. It's just that they did not click. So they only looked at the intersections that they manage and control.
Okay.
So that intersection itself, you know, we have our data showing the crash data there and why it's a prioritization. However, when it was that two thousand and sixteen CDOT study, the five hundred and eighty that they were looking at are ones that they own manage, I guess you could say.
Okay.
Right? Yeah. Those are on those, they look at the ones on the state highway system. It's like US two eighty-seven is on the state system, whereas others are on our county system.
Okay.
I need to look at the focus on that intersection because that was one of the highest county road, county road intersections from our traffic analysis.
Thank you. Okay. That's what helped. I'll just understand how those got chosen. Um, let's see here. There was a few, and I apologize, I don't know who was speaking about, on education about divisions era partnership meetings, bringing together county staff, communities, transportation, et cetera. How do folks get involved in that? Do you have to be a specific, like, government partner? I heard.
That would be more in Alex's realm of, and Kami. I think Kami's online as well.
We've had a variety of partners. We haven't included the general public yet. We've had folks representing different advocacy organizations, so Bicycle Colorado, Bicycle, City, PMA and others. So generally, it's the invitation to folks representing advocacy organizations. And then we've had a few members from the different transportation advisory boards, some around the counties.
Okay. Okay. So public's not welcome to that particular conversation yet?
We haven't made them available to the general public, but we have recordings.
Okay. Okay. And what's the name of that group?
Community Partnership.
Community Partnership. Okay. Thank you.
Looks like Kami was hoping to jump in.
Oh, yeah. Kami, if you.
I'll just add, moving forward, a couple of initiatives that we're expecting funding on will have robust community involvement, especially at the local planning level that we will bring in members of, you know, the vulnerable road user groups as well as other partners that haven't typically been at the table. So I think you'll see a lot more of that coming moving forward.
Thanks for that. And what does that mean when we talk about inviting public to be part of those processes? Are they in decision-making spots? Are they in voting spots in the decisions? How would they be guiding? So that folks know that their time is valuable and it's actually going to be part of the process versus it's kind of sidelined as a subcommittee or a task force.
Sure. Great question. As I think Paul mentioned it, we're expecting to receive some additional funding to do a Vision Zero Safe Routes Action Plan with an expanded group of vulnerable road users with youth. And in that process, we will rank prioritize which schools to sort of address with safety first. And from the get-go, all the way through, I think, to, you know, once we're actually constructing potential improvement projects, students, parents, school decision makers, school districts, some, all those folks will be involved in the identification of what are the issues and identification of what are possible solutions and all of the conversations as built into the process.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. So Ashley's on the screen. Just for situational awareness here, we're going to wrap up in about ten minutes. And so, and I have a few questions I'd like to ask as well. So.
And I have one more question.
Oh, okay.
And I'll be really quick. This is for Christian. So the question, thanks for being here. You talked about auditing of classes that you're doing. And so it was just a curiosity if those are mandatory classes that is part of the prosecution or could you just speak to?
That's great. Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Commissioner. It was classes that we refer folks to. So sometimes it's a specific class depending on what brings somebody. So for example, there's the Alive at Twenty-Five class, which is a good program. And it's usually looking at younger individuals that we have coming through the system. So that may be one where we specifically say do Alive at Twenty-Five. There's other times where we may give an individual a list of two or three classes to choose from. But we wanted to make sure that in that list, it was all classes and education that is worthwhile and meaningful of their time and getting to our goal of more safe driving and minimizing distracted driving.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, Ashley, go ahead.
Thank you so much for the presentation, everyone. This topic is really personal and it's, I hope to convey to everyone how it should be personal to everyone because you say Vision Zero and people may not realize that's talking about zero fatalities, right? Like, these are people in our community. And there was a really interesting video that was made by the Regional Council of Governments where people were surveyed of like, what should the goal be? What should the goal be? And they thought, well, you know, there'll never be zero. And then they asked people, what should the goal be for your family? For your family members? And then everyone changed their answer to zero. Like, obviously, I don't want traffic fatalities in my family. And so when you personalize it, I think it makes people realize like, these are kiddos in our neighborhood or people in our community or our very own family members or even us. And so it's really important that we eliminate these traffic fatalities. And today is totally possible also. So I'm really pleased to see the work staff is putting into this effort and it will take an educational piece because the human component of this is very real. And there are lots of ways to be distracted when we drive, whether it's, you know, food or phones or other people in the car. And so we have to eliminate those types of distractions and really focus on the task at hand when you do have to drive or reduce those trips. One thing I always think about is Newton's second law when we talk about Vision Zero and it's, you know, the F equals MA. Everybody remembers that from their physics class. And so when you think about the force hitting an object, it's the mass times the acceleration. And we have these massive vehicles, right, hitting small vehicles or people or bicycles. So when Alex talks about vulnerable users, I think about that second law. And just from a physics standpoint, what happens to a person when it's, when they are hit by a massive object? The only way to keep them alive is to reduce that acceleration component. So speed really kills. If you look at the maps where we have high-speed network, it corresponds with our high-injury network. So even when people are just going ten miles over, if you think about the impact on a human body, which is very morbid to say aloud, but it's very real, it has a dramatic impact. So in in respect to the questions that Kathleen put on the screen for us, I'm really interested in this legislation that may be coming forward this year or may have already dropped around using photo enforcement of speed. In other countries, they've seen great success eliminating speeding by using photo radar because people are aware that they will be caught if they're speeding. It's important that we don't, that we do a bunch of things from a quality perspective, that we're not capturing the data in a way that is unjust. And there are a lot of protections we would need to put in place to be able to use that kind of intelligence. But if we can eliminate speeding, we could really save lives because people drive the speed the road was designed for, not the speed that was posted. So if it's very easy and a straightaway, it's very easy to speed, right? You find yourself going. There's no one else coming. It's very easy to get going too fast. And a lot of these roads were designed to be able to drive at a much higher speed than we have posted. So we need something else. We could never hire our way out of this through law enforcement with folks going around patrolling. And so if we can use technology to help us reduce speed, it really will save lives. So I'm very interested in more information on the photo radar piece coming forward and how we could apply that in an equitable way and perhaps get that passed in our state. Thanks.
Those are all really great comments and thoughts and important to get on the table. And, you know, to Ashley's point about what should the number be if it's not zero? I, as the board member who attends Dr. Cog, when we adopt our Dr. Cog Vision Zero plan and the number is not zero. And it makes me really queasy to vote for that because I am basically saying that we will tolerate some degree of deaths and serious injury on our roadway. And I, I'm not okay with that. So just a few questions I have. One is, so, you know, these improvements that you're talking about, the striping through the intersections, you know, the things other than like crash barriers and stuff like that that are pretty obvious. Do we have evidence that they are actually effective here? You know, this all sounds really great, but what's, what's the evidence that some of these improvements do reduce fatal and serious injuries?
So I don't know if it rises to the level of peer review yet, but one example of a success that we've had in the county is on J Road. So up until about twenty eighteen or so, we had a number of serious injury and vehicle type crashes on J between Levis and sixty-third. And as a response to that, we implemented a number of engineering measures, including the duck for shoulders on J, striping by playing through intersections, I think, between eight. And that has really reduced our number of bicycle crashes involving turning weather vehicles on that corridor. And since then, we've only had one minor injury by crash. Since those improvements were put in about, I think, fall twenty eighteen. So that's been one really striking success on the county facility.
Yeah. Well, that's great to hear. I'm really glad to know that it is successful. I actually like J Road pretty frequently. Like out the sixty-third, seventy-fifth, Spine Road in there. And I appreciate all that strapping. I also wanted to ask about seatbelt enforcement and impaired driving. And, you know, one of the concerns people raise in making seatbelts, say, a primary offense as opposed to a secondary offense is the risk of racial profiling. And so how does the Sheriff's Department take steps to make sure that we're not using these enforcement tools in a disparate way?
So for the majority of the time, the officer is looking at the vehicle, person inside, traffic violations. For Quikker Ticket or seatbelt violations, we have to have a primary offensive stopping. So it's going to be speeding, running a stop sign, trying to drive or something of that nature. And then once we make the contact rule, it's so the stop itself is based normally on a vehicle, vehicle's actions, not the driver itself.
And I have one more question and then I see Commissioner Stolson has her hand up. You know, the last thing is a simple one. Maybe this is for, for Mark and the Commissioners, we can discuss this. But the, I don't remember who it was that talked about bicycle safety, driving education. Somebody over on this side of the table, I think it was. I would love to talk about how we can make that a part of driver education throughout Colorado. And I, so I don't know what that consists of, but it sounded like it had a lot of potential. So I'll just put that on the table. We don't have time for any follow-up on that. Ashley.
I just wanted to acknowledge Laura's comments in the question and answer and that, and thank Jenna for answering them. So if folks have specific intersections they want to tell staff about, there is a link to the Vision Zero website that Jenna Peterson's put in the chat for people to give us specific intersections. And Laura, thank you. A lot of folks have told us about that intersection on one nineteen, and I know our staff are working really hard on that. But more suggestions, the merrier. And if there's more input on that, it's really helpful. So thanks.
Yeah, great. Thanks for doing that on the screen where Laura could hear it. And we could all hear it because that was important. So this was our first effort. I think we'll all grade ourselves afterwards and see how it went. We did see the comments that the sound was not good. And I know my voice doesn't project very well, so we'll see what we can do to improve that. I have found this really helpful, interesting. I hope everybody else did too. And I'm excited to do more of these. And I hope the public gets in the habit of joining us. So I think it's, so it's nine fifty-four. I'm going to go ahead and close this out and thank everybody for all your work preparing. I know Natalie worked super, super hard to get the room set up and make sure everything worked. And I think it did. So thanks. I think we'll go ahead and end the meeting.